Good evening. I'd like to call the regular town council meeting of Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 to order. And if all are able, if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Row call, please. Counselor Rugansky. Counselor Lewis. Counselor Balboni. Counselor Carey.
Present.
Mayor Del Nicky.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Syracusea.
Present.
Counselor King. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Pendleton. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item four, Mayor's remarks. Just a few short things. Yesterday, January 20th, town offices were closed to honor Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15th, 1929, and additionally, January 20th marked the 60th presidential inauguration. And I am pleased to announce that the Charter Revision Commission has submitted its draft report to the council. I extend my thanks to the commission for their dedication and diligence in producing such a detailed and comprehensive report. I have reviewed the spreadsheet included in the report and impressed by the hard work and commitment that has gone into this effort. The commission's thoroughness and attention to detail are greatly appreciated, and I look forward to discussing the report's contents further. Again, I would like to thank the commission for their invaluable contribution to our community. And moving on to item five, Counselor Pendleton.
Adoption of the agenda.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Discussion changes, additions? Counselor Carey?
I'd like to amend the agenda to reflect the date of Tuesday, January 22nd, 2025.
Twenty twenty first.
Twenty first?
It's twenty first.
Well, but that was just Tuesday.
That's today. It should be Tuesday.
Okay, Tuesday versus Monday, sorry.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Moving on to item six, Town Manager's Report. Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The annual report is posted on the town website. As of this meeting, is on the Town Manager's page. If anybody's interested in taking a look at it, we're currently in the process of awaiting our printed copies to come in, which we'll distribute to the town council, the town library, as well as the town clerk's office, hopefully by our next council meeting. We're currently working on getting our official statement completed for another rating by Standard and Poor. As the council will remember, this rating is a stamp of approval on the fiscal health of our community. The last few times we've gone to Standard and Poor for a rating, they've given the town of South Windsor the highest rating of AAA. Is our expectation that our financials and management of the town should garner an equally high rating. We are actually now scheduled to have our credit rating call on January 23rd, 2025. Hopefully, we usually get the results of those within a week sometime in that ballpark, so. I'm sorry? Yes, I will. Yep. We are also planning on our bond sale, which we typically do early February. Our bond sale's going to be February 6th. As you know, in my report, I did say that we're going to be issuing $15 million. It's actually changed to 14 million at this point, upon the advice of our finance director. We thought it would be a little easier for the town overall to absorb that with the upcoming budget, to do 14 million instead. Just as a note, I do want to make the council aware, we have about 36 million authorized but unissued dollars' worth of debt still to be issued over the next two years. So that would be in 2026 and 2027. And then lastly, the Wheeler Road property, I'd like to bring to the council's attention, the Wheeler Road property. Planning and Zoning Commission currently has a working group that is discussing a zone change with the owner of this property. It has recently been brought to my attention that the property adjacent to the Wheeler property in Manchester, and owned by the same individual, was sold for $60 million. This pending sale was never disclosed to the town staff or to the planning and zoning members. This has significant impact on what could potentially be done with the Wheeler property. I find it unfortunate to say, but it feels dishonest and disingenuous on the part of Washington Prime to work on a zone change when they are negotiating to sell the adjacent property. I would implore the Planning and Zoning Commission to look closely at the request and ensure it is truly in the best interest, long term, for the town of South Windsor. One last item I did want to just mention, not on my report, I did want to recognize our public work staff for their hard work over the holiday weekend. They were a good portion of the weekend due to both icing as well as snow, and I think all of you would agree, woke up to nice, clean roads and able to get out of your homes, and I think they did a great job and wanted to recognize them. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Deputy Mayor Syracusea.
Thank you. Yes, I did leave my house at three o'clock this morning to go to the airport, and it was great to see the roads clear. My car was very cold, but thank you to all those involved in cleaning up our roads. Mr. Maniscalco, that, the Wheeler property, is that our largest commercial piece of property we have left in town?
That is the largest vacant commercial property that we have left in town, so not developed yet.
Okay. And I would agree with you, and I'm happy that you put that in your report, that it did feel a bit dirty. I will say that the very first time, I believe, Mayor Del Nicky was with me as well, that they had a conversation with us. Their representation was very brash and rude, and talked about South Windsor in not very nice ways. So I would urge the Planning and Zoning Commission to think very closely about their decision there, because we do need more commercial tax revenue in this town, and we do not need, what is it, 800 units or somewhere to that number?
I believe it was 600.
I thought it was like seven, was it 699 or something? Okay, yeah. Regardless, if it's 200, 300, it's definitely not something that we need in our town. So I appreciate you putting that in your report and getting to the point, and I couldn't agree with you more.
Counselor Pendleton?
Thank you. Mr. Maniscalco, the 300, or 36 million dollars that has not been issued as of yet, is that for roads?
Some of that is for roads, some of it's for other smaller issues that were approved previously, like open space, things like that, so.
Okay. And how much property do we have of the Wheeler property? How many is our acres and how many is their acres?
The town doesn't own any property over there. That's all theirs.
So that whole strip, none of that is South Windsor's?
Well, it's all in the town of South Windsor. It's just, we don't own it. It's privately owned.
Right, but it's in the town of South Windsor. That's what I mean. And some of it is in Manchester, is it not?
No, I believe all of the Wheeler property is in South Windsor.
I see. Okay, because you mentioned Manchester here, so that's where I was getting confused.
So the plaza, the shopping plaza is what sold? So the shopping plaza where Trader Joe's is?
Yes.
In Manchester just sold. So that's Manchester. Immediately behind that is South Windsor.
I see. Okay. So they sold the Trader Joe's, but the property that's within our boundaries, within South Windsor, they own, but they have not sold that yet?
Not yet, no.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Carey?
Just one question. Do we have a sense of the interest rate on the bonds, the 14 million?
I haven't heard yet. There's been some conversation back and forth related to markets currently and what it's going to be. I think part of that conversation entailed, you know, whenever a new president is sworn into office, as you saw today, markets typically go up. And then the question is, what happens with the market after that, sometime in early February? And there's, it's all over the place. So we weren't really able to pinpoint something to get a general idea yet, but as soon as I hear something, I can certainly let you know.
Okay, and then what we bonded? Last year, we bonded at 7%?
I don't remember the number off the top of my head right now. I'd have to, I'd have to get it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Maniscalco, I agree with Deputy Mayor Syracusea. I appreciate you putting this on your report. I'm wondering, what would your recommendations be? What options the Planning and Zoning have?
Well, I mean, it is a commercial property. The owner's coming in looking for zone change. He's looking to change it to some type of residential use or some type of mixed residential use. What that mix is, probably, you know, I would leave to their discretion, but I think probably we want to have a heavier focus on commercial as much as possible, seeing as it is one of our last larger commercial pieces. I think historically, if you look at what's happened with the shopping plaza in Manchester, and that piece of property, purposefully, what happened in Manchester is they basically blocked off that piece of property to make it less valuable, because there were ill feelings between the town of South Windsor and that developer at the time. I think unfortunately, it's that developers, the onus is on that developer to do something to actually make the Wheeler property more usable for commercial. In the conversation I had with the developer, I explained to him very clearly that, you know, that's not our problem that that ended up that way. You built it that way. You designed it that way. It's kind of their responsibility to fix it. And I think we've seen other entities, Evergreen Walk is a great example, where they came in and they invested significant amounts of money in moving certain businesses to certain locations in an effort to make another portion of that property actually work. So you have to invest something to get something, and I think it's a very similar scenario in that picture. Now, how that ends up working, since they've now sold this property, I don't really know. I think personally, they were trying to shoot to get some kind of zone change from us to make the value of the Wheeler property more, so they could sell that as well. Obviously, that hasn't happened yet, so I don't know. But it does feel rather, it feels real disingenuous. That's the best way I can say it, so.
Seeing nothing further? Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco.
Yep.
Moving on to item seven, Public Input for Items on the Agenda. Public input shall not exceed 30 minutes. When recognized by the mayor, the speakers shall approach the lectern, give their name and address. Speakers shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging an improper motive to any person. Speakers may address the council on any item on the agenda. The speakers shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to come forward at this time? Mr. Joy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. David Joy, 100 Bramblebury, speaking to you tonight as your town treasurer. Wanted to offer two comments about item 13B, and they're both specific to the details of the text that's in Exhibit A. There are two sections here that I would recommend the council consider editing, if you are approving this tonight. The first is Section 5, and as I read that section, I believe it says that "If this referendum passes and the project is completed and money is left over, the town manager can recommend and you all can approve the use of those bonded funds for other purposes." I think it's limited to things within your capital plan. I would recommend against that. We're talking here about a referendum that's approved by the voters, and they'll be voting on a project that'll be described to them, and I'm not sure many of them, certainly I wouldn't want to see leftover funds used for other purposes. The other section I want to comment on is Section 8. In that section, there are two appearances of a phrase called "or either of them," and what that text does is allow either the town manager or the town treasurer to go independently do something with respect to what's listed in Section 8. And I would just recommend that those words be removed and that it be consistent with the rest of the resolution, where there are various activities where the town manager and the town treasurer work in concert. And I'll use the opportunity to say, great working relationship with Mr. Maniscalco and Ms. Perry, both a delight to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward at this time? Mr. Edwards?
Is this on? Perfect. Hi, Dan Edwards, 131 Hilton Drive. I'd like to thank the town manager for bringing up the Wheeler Road issue. As I watched the planning and zoning meeting last week, very surprised and shocked that that was just brought up at that point only. Some of the concerns, and I know, I think Counselor Pendleton had mentioned something about Manchester versus South Windsor, I don't know if anyone else picked up, but he would have to have some form of a relationship with the Manchester property to really allow for better access to the highway, because otherwise you're looking at exiting that facility off of Wheeler Road, I believe that's the road, which, put it this way, I wasn't very impressed listening to the presentation, you know, this one or when it was initially outlined. I think it was a very weird, one of the commissioners brought up the phrase of geriatric, we're becoming a geriatric town. We certainly need senior housing, but based on the number of units we already have in place, the number that are actually already in the pipeline, I think this is a lot, and I don't think it's necessarily going to be the most affordable for the senior residents. And I think that was actually also brought up by some of the commissioners during that. And then the second thing is really with respect to the referendum today. I just, I get the support, the desire to have the lighted field. I wish there was a way where they could do something with the existing lighted field. That's not a possibility. But right now, it feels like this referendum is two months too late. Multiple people dropped the ball, in my opinion. This most likely should have come back in November, after you guys passed on it in January. Nobody ever brought it back. And that's a bit confusing. It's also a bit disingenuous now to, in the presentation, be blaming the escalation costs on that delay. The goal is to actually get as many people in town that are aware. There's half the people in town that don't realize that there's, this is under consideration. There's people that I've spoken with that are asking why we're going to put pickleball courts there when we already just put pickleball courts in town. I will say that the one thing that definitely needs to be done is the roads, and I'm not sure why we can't parse that part out under the paving for progress. Seems like that's one of the most logical things right now to make sure that we tackle, because that's a nightmare getting into school. I'm not sure it's going to improve anything. It feels like Ayers needs to be doubled, but that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward at this time?
I'm already signed in here. My name is Ray Pollan, and I live at 25 Mohegan Trail in South Windsor. I'm here to speak to the Board of Ed's revised plan to improve our high school campus and increase recreational assets for the community referendum. I expect, as the previous speakers mentioned, I expected this revised plan and referendum to be proposed by the Board of Ed last summer for general election, for a general election vote in November. It didn't happen. I was hoping that was because the Board of Ed was busy soliciting alternative funding sources for the new lighted, lighted multipurpose turf field and tennis courts, such as state and federal government subsidies or business donations. Apparently, that has not happened. I spoke in support of this project at its inception around this time last year in this town council chamber, but in its rush for referendum, the original Board of Ed proposal was inadequate. The new lighted multipurpose turf field was well conceived, but the replacement of the demolished tennis courts, basketball courts, and baseball fields, not so much. There were no lights on the tennis courts, which you remedied. The added tennis court lights required the Board of Ed to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission to request a waiver because they were within 100 feet of an existing structure. Ironically, that existing structure was not the houses on the adjoining Collins Crossing, but the town's own structure, the senior center, across Nevers Road from the proposed new tennis courts. So the Board of Ed was granted the waiver. Your representative to the Planning and Zoning Commission should be able to attest that the Planning and Zoning Commission made two other additions to the proposed referendum. To alleviate the inadequate parking of the new tennis and pickleball courts, Planning and Zoning added five additional parking spaces, which I trust this revised plan includes. At the time, the Planning and Zoning Commissioner acknowledged that this may be, still may be insufficient, and held out the possibility that more parking spaces might have to be added in the future. In my humble opinion, this will happen when it's apparent that tennis players or fans, particularly out-of-towners, are parking in senior center parking spaces and crossing Nevers Road to get to the tennis courts. The Planning and Zoning Commission also agreed that the tennis court lights should remain on until 10:00 PM, not 9:00 PM as planned, to allow the adult community to use the courts for an hour or two after dinner and putting the kids to bed. My closing words last year at this town council meeting were, if we're going to do this, let's do it right. I believe that this revised plan has it as right as can be now, and it's time to vote the referendum up or down. Should the referendum fail, a real possibility with 8.7 million in Board of Education capital spending coming on the heels of 6.4 million increase in the Board of Ed's operating budget, the existing tennis courts will still need major renovation. These are community tennis courts that folks judge a town not only by its schools, but also by its athletic facilities. The current status of these, the town's sole remaining dedicated tennis courts, frankly, is an embarrassment. South Windsor High School has top-notch tennis teams, and we should not have to apologize for the condition or number of our tennis courts. Last spring, the girls' high school tennis team hosted the first three rounds of the state playoffs. They were number two seeded in the state. The second round concluded at dusk because it went to the deciding seventh match, and South Windsor has only six tennis courts. Should the referendum fail, the Board of Ed needs to have a Plan B for the renovation and expansion of the existing tennis courts. The high school teams in South Windsor community deserve better.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward at this time? Did you sign in, Ms. Doherty?
Do you want this paper where everybody signed in?
Yeah, that would help. Thank you, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Doherty, 60 Madison Way. What a difference a year makes. One year ago, I came and spoke in favor of the improvements in fields requested by the Board of Education. Today, I am here to ask the council to postpone consideration of this project for the following reasons. We all know that South Windsor is an outlier from other towns due to its double-digit enrollment growth, which could be a good reason for the improvements in field projects. However, with enrollment growth also come costs to educate these students. This fiscal year, the Board of Education budget was increased by $6.3 million. The municipal side of the budget saw an increase much less, less than 1%, or so pretty much stayed flat. Yet, this resulted in an almost 5% tax increase year over year. Let's look at the three-year average. The Board of Education increased by $16 million and the town by $800,000. And each year, the taxpayers has had to suffer the impact of huge tax bills. This is not sustainable. In October, the town held a quad board meeting. The message given to the council and the Board of Education by Patricia Perry, Director of Finance, was simple but bleak. Here are a few key points. If the budget were to remain fat, flat, not one penny more to be spent year over year, our taxes would still increase a significant amount due to the debt we owe and the less money on our grant list. In February this year, that's like in two weeks, this town is going to bond out $14 million. Some of it is for Pleasant Valley, some for public improvements, some for sidewalks and roads, all of which have expenditures that have been approved through previous referendums but have not yet hit your pockets. But they will on July 1st. There is still an additional $37 million that has been approved by voters but has not yet been spent. But it will be. When? We're not sure. But that 37 million is going to hit your tax bill in the coming years. The budget season is upon us. We do not yet know what the impact of our taxes will be. We do not yet know what the impact of our taxes will be. However, with the growth still happening in the schools, I am confident the budget ask will be in excess of 5%. We, the taxpayers, will still see yet another substantial increase in our taxes. With the overwhelming debt that we have incurred over the last six years, coupled with the fact that South Windsor is losing $2 to $3 million in revenue year over year due to the swipe of a pen from our legislators in Hartford, South Windsor has lost over $51 million in one year in our grant list. This is huge, and it will impact many residents negatively. I would like to see improvements in South Windsor, but I would like to see it done transparently and not in a vacuum. I would like to see how taxes are impacted with these new items coming online before you start approving others. So I come to you tonight with an ask. I would like to see the town hold the referendum in November, and in the meantime, educate the taxpayers so they know what their future looks like, what are the real dollars that are coming due, and what is the timeline. Second, I challenge the council to do the following. Have a true work session with everyone around a table with open dialogue, not where the council is directing the conversation, include the Board of Education, Planning and Zoning, Economic Development. Further, I would like to see a citizens' budget advisory committee, not made up of politicians or political appointees, but rather people that represent the demographics of our town, seniors, people with young families, people without children, et cetera. Let them look at the needs of the town and give recommendations to the council and the Board of Ed. There are many needs and wants in our town, from the community center to the Parks and Recreation Building that is not even ADA compliant and requires an upgrade to the fire and CFA system. By putting together an advisory group to look at all of the issues and prioritize them, it will give the council a better idea of the larger picture. A November referendum will allow all stakeholders to provide guidance on areas requiring voter input. I have one more sentence. Such as open space funds, roads, park and rec building, as well as the fields and high school improvements. Stop separating out the Board of Education projects and the town projects. After all, the money comes from the same place, the taxpayers' pockets.
Thank you for giving me that. Thank you.
Roy Norman, Hunter Drive. I want to just address the issue of the athletic fields for the high school. I generally support the need to upgrade our athletic fields there. However, I don't think the public is being given enough time to really get information about the details of its rather complex plan. And I don't think the PBC has reviewed the plan. That should be checked out. And so basically, I'm generally in favor of it, but I think it should be moved, the referendum should be moved to November, to give the public a lot more time to get around it and be able to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Doug Gugino?
He'll be on the item 15.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward at this time? On item seven, items on the agenda? Anyone else would like to come forward at this time?
Madam Mayor, I have a letter to read into the record for an item that's on the agenda.
Oh, sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. To Mayor Del Nicky and the Town Council from Craig Zimmerman. As a Board of Education member, volunteer coach, and 60-year town resident, I am a strong supporter of the proposed high school improvement plan. The plan includes an additional much-needed multi-sport turf field with lights, a second driveway into the school, seven brand-new tennis courts, and four new pickleball courts, which are needs and not wants, given our increasing student population, and have primarily been in the BOE's strategic plan and referenced in our most recent high school accreditation. While we initially asked for the opportunity to go to referendum in March 2024, postponing the date a second time will just further delay this much-needed project. A March 2025 referendum will, number one, save the taxpayers' money and give our students and residents the opportunity to use these facilities and improvements later this fall. Number two, keep the high school improvement plan from competing with the Parks and Recreation Building project, which is expected to be on the ballot in November. If our smaller project was taken care of this March, this could help the chances of the other referendum passing. While I heard the concerns shared by some town council members, I respectfully still believe that letting the voters decide in a March referendum makes the most educational and fiscal sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fitzgerald. Seeing nothing further, moving on to item eight. Counselor Fitzgerald?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Approval of the December 16, 2024 Town Council regular meeting minutes. Be it resolved that the town, the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting of December 16, 2024.
We have a motion? We have a second? Any discussion, changes, deletions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Counselor Fitzgerald?
Okay. Approval of the January 6, 2025 Town Council regular meeting minutes. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting of January 6, 2025.
We have a motion? We have a second? Any discussion, changes, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Roll call, please. Counselor Boganski? Counselor Lewis? Counselor Balboni? Counselor Carey? Mayor Del Nicky? Deputy Mayor Syracusea? Counselor King? Counselor Fitzgerald? Yeses. Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item nine, communications liaisons from officers and boards directly responsible to the council. Counselor Carey?
So one of the meetings that we had this, last week was Planning and zoning. And so two important things came up. One, the developer of the Wheeler property did present senior housing plan that had been proposed through the subcommittees. There is a subcommittee working on the Wheeler property. Wheeler property is currently zoned, design commercial. And so there is a push to change that. There are some issues with design commercial, one of which is design commercial does allow for 830G housing. And so, you know, that is a concern, and that pretty much is what was originally proposed in those 600 apartments. So the subcommittee has been working to see, could we come up with something that would work for the developer and for the town? One of the things that Counselor, and I apologize, Mike, for messing up your name, Olet, brought up, was that New Cana has somehow managed to get a moratorium. Now, there is a chance that it's going to get denied again or appealed, but they have managed to get an 830G moratorium. And, you know, one of the things that we were hopeful that we could do in South Windsor was see, was there any possibility of getting a moratorium because of our tremendous growth in, you know, students, the fact that we have 6% affordable housing currently? We have not been able to do that. But I think if New Cana does indeed have a moratorium, we need to look to see, what did they do? And is there anything that we could do to do something similar? Because if this holds, it will be for four years, and that would be really, really helpful for our town. So I wanted to mention that to everybody, in case you hadn't watched the Planning and zoning meeting. Thank you. That's all.
Counselor Balboni?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just quickly, the Patriotic Commission wanted me to let everybody know that the annual Patriotic Commission essay contest is now open to all South Windsor students, and that includes South Windsor students in all private K through 12 schools as well. Information can be found on the town's website, as well as the commission's Facebook page. Thank you.
That's it?
That was it.
All right. Quick. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Water Police Control Authority. There was nothing to report there. It was a quick meeting. Parks and Rec did not have a quorum, so they did not meet. And I also attended Capital Projects, which Deputy Mayor will report on later. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lewis. Anything further? Moving on to item 10, reports from committees. Counselor Carey?
So, as you know, we had put together a committee to work on Boarding Commission Working Group to look to see if there was anything we could do to consolidate some of our boards and commissions. We did meet on a, this committee is Counselor Fitzgerald and Counselor Balboni. Due to the holidays, travel, and illness, I don't know why people keep getting sick, but, you know, it's happening this time of year. We have not had our second meeting, but we have one scheduled for next Monday, and we will be able to produce a report letting you know where we are.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Syracusea?
Yeah. Capital Projects met. We voted on our project budget list, and I guess final budget that is going to be presented to the council. There was an original list. The rest of the counselors do have this list in front of you. But the original ask was about $9.3 million. And then basically, what happened last year, in our first meeting, I asked if every department could rank one through three, their actual, like, top-three priority projects that they had. And then Mr. Scott Roberts, our Assistant Town Manager, with, I'm sure, the help of the department heads, came up with a great idea to come up with different scenarios to then take those rankings and then see which ones really are overall things we really need. And the ultimate ask coming to the council is about $3.5 million. I don't know if that, is that a little higher than the minimum that we have to increase, or is that right on the dot? Okay, so essentially, that's the number that the council, unless we end up chucking more in there, that's the minimum amount of increase needed. If anybody wants to know what these projects are, wants to reach out, feel free to reach out to me, and I'm happy to do that. But it was a very quick meeting, because we did get great presentations from those department heads in the meeting prior, and we've all kind of known about these projects anyways. So it was a quick meeting, just to kind of pass the final number, and then it'll come to the council next.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing nothing further, moving on to item 11, Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda, 11A, Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve 11A1 as a first reading on the Consent Agenda, which is a resolution reappointing Steve Lewis as a member of the Inland Wetlands Commission. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby reappoints Steve Lewis as a member of the Inland Wetlands Commission for a term ending December 31, 2028, and postpones consideration of this motion until the next regularly scheduled meeting.
We have a motion? We have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to 11B, Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion to approve 11B1 as a second reading on the Consent Agenda.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. 11C, miscellaneous, having none. Item 12, unfinished business, having none. Moving on to 13A, Counselor Boganski.
Don't we have the public input in 17 minutes on this item?
Oh. Yes. We'll skip over 13A right now. Thank you. Moving on to 13B, Deputy Mayor Syracusea.
Thank you. Resolution appropriating $8,671,000 for the planning, design, acquisition, installation, construction, equipping and furnishing of campus improvements and new athletic facilities at South Windsor High School or other town property, and authorizing the issuance of $8,671,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose as known in attached Exhibit A.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Deputy Mayor Syracusea?
Thank you. I've been pretty vocal and pretty transparent about my support, which was evident in the last time we voted for this, and then before it was even on, which I do plan to put my support behind. That doesn't necessarily mean that something myself as a resident would vote for. I just believe we've got an overwhelming ask to let the town decide. Tonight was really the only night that we got some, I don't want to say negative, just kind of opposing views on it, which I do appreciate both sides. But I do want to, I do want to mention, that's not me disagreeing with the folks to my left or right, or anybody who ends up potentially voting no for this. I do know that Counselor Carey, Counselor Balboni, and Boganski have put significant efforts into looking into the financials of our town, especially Counselor Carey. I just want to remind everybody that we're all volunteers here, and that woman to my left has put in many, many, many hours, looking at pretty much every penny that's been spent and outlooking, would you say, 15, 20 years down the road. So I will say, whether you are in support of this or against it, if you are for it and you are listening, I would definitely still take into account what Counselor Carey has been pointing out, because it is giving a very good forecast on the financial, I guess, issues that we're dealing with in our town. And I think a lot of municipalities across the state and across America are dealing with the same things. So just think about it, if this does go on a referendum in March, or November, or two years, three years, whatever, whenever it hits the voting booths, I will say, just know that some people may be struggling financially compared to how you are, and it does affect people's livelihood. So I do plan to support this tonight, but I do also agree with everything you're going to hear tonight from the folks that I've been working with. And there was a couple of good points that I want to point out from the public input, and thank you to everybody that came out to speak. I do agree with the gentleman who talked about the Board of Ed not necessarily changing much or coming back with a polished approach. I was a little disturbed, and I know I did say this publicly. We had a Capital Projects meeting the night after this was shot down the last time, and it was kind of painted as this safety project for the parking lot improvement and the new entrance, and that was the number one that list I just talked about. We did the same thing last year. That was the number-one priority, also on, for whatever reason, it was on the Capital Project ask as well. Well, then the next night after the field project was voted down, it magically was off of the Capital Projects list. So myself, as a parent, three daughters now, hopefully will be in town until they get to the high school. I don't plan on leaving. I was I was interested in hearing that we have some safety improvements, and so it kind of went from, it's the most important thing in town, we need to do this for the safety of our students to... Oh, and this is all stuff that you can hear, it's a recorded meeting, Capitol Projects, go and look it up. It went from, we think we can do this 2 or 3 years from now. So, you know, part of me is a little kind of disturbed as somebody that is a vocal supporter of the project, or at least letting the townspeople decide on it. But there are parts of me that also feel that things aren't necessarily being as transparent as they should be. I've said this before, Mr. Zimmerman, I think very highly of, I was a baseball player, always saw the guy at the fields since I was a child, really. But I am a little worried about point number 2 that he made in his email of not wanting it to interfere with the potential Parks and Rec building referendum. To me, it just proves that there's some sort of strategic thing here. It's not, hey, we want this field, doesn't matter when it is, let's let the town people decide, because it should have been on the ballot in November. Why it wasn't, I don't know. So again, as a supporter, and I plan on voting yes tonight, I just want to say that those types of things do rub me the wrong way. So keep that in mind next time.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Bogansky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Some of this has probably been said before, but I think it bears repeating. Most of us, most if not all of us up here agree that the Campus Improvement Project is a worthwhile venture for the voters of the town to consider. Many of us feel the timing of a March referendum is not favorable to those same voters for some of the following reasons. Most importantly, the tax increase for the 25, 26 fiscal year, and of course beyond, would not have been determined. We know it's going up, just not how much. I believe this is a vital piece of financial information voters should be armed with going into the vote. Project costs could go up if the referendum is delayed and eventually approved by the voters. There's no guarantee of that, as material costs go up and down regularly. However, we do know that right now bond rates are about their highest point, so if the project were approved now and bonded in the near future, the long-term interest expense over a 20-year bond would be multiples of any potential fixed cost increase to the project. This could, should have been on the November ballot, however, both the Board of Ed and Dr. Carter ignored our requests to add it to the November referendum for reasons only they seem to know. And last but not least, given the fiscal pressures the town is already under, and knowing that there are other projects that still have to go to referendum, Parks and Rec Building for one, and that there is still a substantial amount of spending that has already been approved in prior referendums but not yet bonded, I think we said 36 or 37 million, and therefore not in the current mill rate, I feel imperative that as many voters as possible have an opportunity to have their voice heard on this issue. We know that historically, at best, there is an average 22% turnout for March votes, although November municipal only elections are much better, at 45%, it's still about double, drawing at least an additional 2,000 to 2,500 voters. I am perfectly okay putting the referendum on the November ballot, even with the potential of it costing slightly more than it would in March if a larger percentage of the registered voters participate in the process and have a full understanding of their tax position going into the voting booth. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bogansky. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too would like to perhaps repeat some things that have been already said. One, the number 1 concern of our constituents was to keep taxes down and keep South Windsor affordable for all of our families. We ran on cutting spending. However, once you're seated and the reality is revealed, you realize that spending over the last 6 years have been out of control. Approving spending, the bill has come due, and we're starting to pay it without relief for the next 6 to 8 years. If the municipal education budgets came in at zero without any new expenditures, taxes would still increase significantly. This information was provided to us and for us at the quad meeting. Two, the state with a stroke of a pen has taken 51.8 million off our grand list in 1 year. That is, items that were once taxable no longer taxed and given to revenue to this town, it's reduced our dollars by $2 to $3 million in just 1 year. Saying it another way, we're going into this budget season, we have $2 to $3 million less than we had last year. Three, this town cannot be divided. We need to recognize that although we're... That there are different pots of money, funding for those pots on the backs of our citizens, we need to hold the quad board meetings every 3 months, or something like that. But it needs to have a format where we're all sitting around the table, and there's an honest conversation, not the council just deciding on what's best for the citizens. Four, we need to have a meeting with the Board of Education to discuss their capital needs, including the high school improvements and parks and rec building, and start prioritizing things in a way that can be better accommodate everyone, as Mr. already had mentioned before. Five, the Board of Education's had an average increase of 6.88 over the last 3 years, and this has become unsustainable. If the Board were going to get additional 4 million this year, or 4% increase, taxes would go up 5.9%. We're literally taxing people out of this town, and we were, again, elected to cut spending and cut taxes. It's not an easy task to do. I also, however, am in favor of the improvements. I just think that the most citizens possible need to be present for that vote to happen, and that's not going to happen in March. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. Anyone else like to speak? Counselor Balboni?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like my fellow counselors, I want to be clear, I am for this project. I'd love to see the kids playing football and other sports under the lights of a big, beautiful field. We, the council, wanted to give our residents the opportunity to vote on the referendum in November, at which I would have gone in and cast my own yes vote. We ran on a platform to control spending with the overspending of the previous councils, as well as the Board of Ed's outrageous budgets, and the Connecticut State Legislature's thoughtless changes, it's been an impossible task. We wanted 85% of the town residents that showed up to vote in November to decide that they were willing to have their taxes go up drastically, as opposed to the 20% that would show up in March. The next opportunity we have for anything like that is November 7, 2028. I'm sure the people for the fields don't want to wait until then to vote, but hence, that's why I disagree with holding the referendum this March.
Anyone else? Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for clarification, and it's only because I literally, and I apologize for being late, just came from a Wee Below meeting of the Scouts at Eli Terry. And one of the questions that they asked is, what does the town council do? What are their responsibilities? More specifically, they asked, for maybe some of our residents, which I do know from knocking on doors, they asked, what branch is the town council? We are a legislative body. It's our job to make laws and policies for a town. At the end of the day, we are town counselors, and we're made up of elected officials who are responsible for governing the town. We propose bills, public hearings, vote, then we pass laws, ordinances. That's what we ran to do. My confusion, and I am, is if you would have voted yes in November, and even for our townspeople that spoke up tonight, and previously, if you would have voted yes in November, and you weren't concerned about what people knew or didn't know in November, what is the difference now that we've given December, January, February, March? We've given 4 additional months for people to know. If you would have voted, that's my only... People have brought up people of knowledge, and I remember, we had a full house. We brought up the words "education," and now we're saying, and we have been, the amount of voters. Okay, give or take. People are going to vote on what they want to vote on. Trust me, myself and my fellow deputy mayor, we know that. Specifically, people vote for who they want, and they vote for what they want. They show up, they vote, it's either yea or nay. And my only question to my fellow counselors is, you know, in regards to having a March referendum, what really is the difference if you would have been fine it being in November? Because based on what you've said, there is no difference. Actually, you win, you get 4 extra months. So, yeah, that's the question that I would ask, that we, you know, I would love to hear responsibly, if I could, Madam Mayor.
Who are you looking for?
Oh, no, I'm just... From everybody that said that they would like to, they would have voted for it in November, they agree that it's good, they would have voted yes in November, but now 4 months later, they think, oh, we're rushing it. Why wasn't it rushed if we would have done it in November, but now it's a rush 4 months later?
Counselor Carey?
So I'll answer your question while I make my comments, okay?
Yep.
As I've mentioned previously, overall, you know, I think having laid a field is a nice idea. I did not think that it should be on the referendum last March, because historically, we only get 22% to 25% of our registered voters voting in March, and we also didn't know what the Board of Ed's budget was going to be. And I really think that people need to understand the tax implications of what they are doing, okay? And they needed to know that this wasn't just the only thing that was going to hit their taxes, that the Board of Ed's budget would also hit their taxes, right? Or the towns, but the town came in low last year. So we voted no last March. In June, I reached out to chairperson of the Board of Ed and said, do you want to put the referendum on the November ballot? It was a presidential election, has a tendency to draw a high percentage of voters, would give the largest group of registered voters in our town the chance to give their opinion. Response I got was no. I had a call with the superintendent, Dr. Carter, on something else, and I said, would you like to put the referendum on, and this was in June, July, on the November ballot? Again, I thought the November ballot was a great time. The answer was no. Now, the question somebody asked is, well, why don't you just do it yourself? Well, because it wasn't my referendum, and if I had a referendum and somebody arbitrarily put my referendum on when I told them no, I would have had a huge problem with that. So, you know, but I asked, and I asked multiple times because I really felt it was important. Now here comes March, and we're going to, again, suggest putting it on the ballot in front of 22% to 25% of our residents before anybody has any clue what the budgets are coming in looking like, and what the tax situation is going to look like. The time is not good. And so I feel very strongly that it shouldn't be in March, and that we need to ask the Board of Ed, please, 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 bring this to us in the summer, so we can get it on the first meeting in September, so we can put it on the ballot for November.
If we can pause probably 30 seconds, because we have our public hearing starting at 8:00 PM. So we can just wait a minute until 8:00 PM. Now it's 8:00 PM. So we are now going to suspend the regular town council meeting for our public hearing. The public hearing is to receive citizen input on the appropriation of $234,900 of LoSiP funds to cover the costs associated with the replacement of the town hall roof. Ms. Sennert, if you can please read the public notice.
To be published in the Journal Inquirer, January 10, 2025, legal ad town of South Windsor. Notice is hereby given that the South Windsor Town Council has set Tuesday, January 21, 2025, at 8:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, 1540 Sullivan Ave, South Windsor, Connecticut, as a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the appropriation of $234,900 of LoSiP funds to cover costs associated with the town hall roof, dated at South Windsor, Connecticut, this 8th day of January 2025, attested to by Catherine Sennert, Executive Assistant.
Thank you. And if anybody doesn't know what LoSiP funds is, it's local capital improvement program. It's the state of Connecticut that provides monies to the municipalities. So is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to the council during this public hearing for appropriation of $234,900 in LoSiP funds? Is there anyone who would like to come forward? Okay, it's going to be a quick public hearing again, I believe. Going once, going twice. At this time, I will close the public hearing and take a straw poll. This is a straw poll, not a scientific poll, for all those in favor of the appropriation of $234,900 of LoSiP funds, please raise your hand if you are in favor. Those opposed? Okay, thank you. We will now... The public hearing is closed, and we will now resume the regular council meeting. Okay, where were we? Counselor, I mean, was Counselor Carey done? You're done, okay. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I know we talked about this before, Counselor King. I'm not sure with the previous council, I think I was on for like 5 or 6 months. I think it was the day after I was appointed, or sometime after that, I was approached by, I don't know if they call it minority leader on the board, but whoever that representative would have been, since I was the minority leader on the council, hey, there's this field thing buzzing around, is this something that you would support? They wanted to get it on that November, when we had our local election going on. Said, yeah, sounds good to me, I think it'd be great. And it didn't even make an agenda. It didn't hit an agenda. And I know, I don't know if that ever hit the rest of the council, I can't speak to that, and there was just one of me, so it's pretty easy for me to get that message to the rest of my party, since I was the only Republican. But just to kind of level the playing field on the comment that you made about strategic moves or whatever, it's just, I don't know, someone made a decision not to put it on in an election, in a local election cycle. So I just kind of want to let the public know about that, based off of your comment that you made. And again, I apologize to you if that's not something that you ever heard, but my understanding was that Mr. Zimmerman was going to do the same to the Democrats as I got. So just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Fitzgerald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say, as a parent who has had to deal with the nightmare of the driveway that exists at the high school, and who has heard plenty of times about kids getting hit by cars as they're crossing the street to get into the high school parking, or into the high school area, and car accidents happening in the area, I think the driveway improvement portion of this is extremely important. And as a parent who has gone to watch her daughter play JV field hockey, and also JV lacrosse, and watched a 15-minute game that has to be called because it's dark, I'm completely in favor of putting this before the voters. If this had been on the referendum last March and it had passed, it would have cost, you know, $500,000 plus less than it's going to cost by doing this. Now, this November, you know, we don't know what the escalation costs will be if it's voted on next November, and won't be able to be done until the summer of 2026, but, you know, in my experience, prices generally don't go down, they go up. So, you know, I don't want to have to see us looking at something that now costs, you know, $1 million, $800,000 more than it would have cost if it had been voted on, and voted, you know, yes, last March. And I also think that, you know, if people want to, if people don't want to support it, they're going to come out and vote, and if people do want to support it, they're going to come out and vote, and it doesn't matter whether it's in March or it's in November, they're going to do that. I also kind of got the impression from a few people who spoke that they think that we're kind of springing this on the voters. I mean, you all... I mean, you all, I wasn't on the council at the time, but you all discussed this last year in 2024. And the Board of Ed has been discussing it, superintendent's been discussing it. I think it's something that the people know about. And if it's going to be on the ballot in March or November, there's going to be plenty of publicity about it, and people can decide if they want to come out and vote for it or vote against it. So I will be supporting this measure. Thanks.
Counselor Pendleton?
Thank you. Mr. Town Attorney, can folks vote absentee ballot in a referendum in March? Excuse me?
Yes.
Okay. So that eliminates the 25% and increases it because they can do an absentee ballot. Yes, thank you. I have to say that I'm sitting here listening to all the comments. First of all, I'd like to say that, oh, I don't know, 14 years ago, 10 years ago, when the schools were voted on, flew with flying colors. And it was only going to cost us $203 extra in our taxes. But nobody stopped to think about what it's going to cost to fill those schools with teachers or staff or what have you. So now we have those that we have to pay for. And so when folks stand up here and complain about the Board of Education increasing in taxes, well, you have schools that you have to have staff in. And then you have teachers' contracts that you have to agree with. So that's a problem to sit there and keep blaming the schools after all these years when the reality is that it flew with flying colors. Now it has to be staffed. It is what it is. We are where we are, and we have to continue to support the Board of Education. Not only that, oh, I want to say four or five years ago, I started the quad board meetings, talking about the quad boarding meetings and where this town was going, where we were going financially, what was the game plan, what we were going to do. It's not new on you guys. You didn't do it, I did it. I did it. And not once did any of you say, good job, Pendleton. No, thank you. No, it's okay. I got it. So to sit and have a meeting with the four bodies that affect the town, either with the taxes or decisions or planning and zoning, is an awesome thing to do. To sit and try to figure out financially where we're headed and to have our economic development coordinator in the room with us and our financial person with us to help us and guide us to where we're going. The unfortunate part of what I'm hearing now, as I sit here and I listen, I'm going to be honest, like I always am, it might sound ugly, but I'm going to be honest. What I'm hearing is some very inexperienced council members who, very inexperienced council members who are afraid to take on the true grit of what it means to run our community. We are the governing body, we are the legislative body, we make the decisions financially. We have to look at all the ins and the outs of everything. We have to have the courage to support our community as a whole. We don't sit up here and give our opinion on how we're going to vote. We don't do that, that's not our job. Our job is to say, this is what we want to bring to the people. That's our job. But to have the courage to sit and say, I don't know what numbers you figured out, Carolyn, because you haven't shared that with us, or what financial game plan you may have for the town. None of us know that. If you have one, that'd be great. You know, it is true, sure. Well, I mean, I was told you have like 25 years out of numbers or something. That was said earlier this evening. So to sit and to listen to those numbers or sit and figure out what the financial game plan is, don't run from something. Don't run from something because you're afraid. Don't run from something because you're, you don't want it to affect the citizens. Well, let the citizens decide. We are only responsible for bringing it to a referendum. And then you ran on spending and cutting taxes? Y'all raised taxes already this year. This year alone, you did. Just by approving the union contracts of our town employees, taxes were raised. Money has been spent. It's not like you're going to reduce it. It happens. That's the way it is. And for folks to sit there and let's say form a committee, the committee that we have is our town manager, who's going to tell us where we are with our finances on the government side of things. The committee we have is the Board of Education, who they can figure out their finances and tell us where they are with things. Our job is to gather all of it up. We have the Committee of CIP, thank you, Mr. Roberts, for us to sit down and gather everything and put it all together. But to have the courage to do so and to sit there and say, we know we might be going into tough times. It's been that way for the last 25 years. Taxes have gone up for the last 25 years. They went up with the schools. They went up with the field. They went up with the streets. They, it, it happens. That's what the town is about. If you don't do improvements, if you don't spend money to make money, if you don't do your improvements, you're going to be stuck. You're not going to improve our community. Our community not only needs a great school system, not even, not only needs a great government that runs it, but also our sports that we have. That brings people to the community. That gets families involved in our community. To, to have, years back to watch the girls from the tennis court come in here, the tennis, tennis team from the high school come in here and say how they were in violation and how that tennis court was so bad that they couldn't play on it and avoiding injuries and things like that. I, I can't. That was like the softball field for the girls, too. They violated Title 19, so they fixed it. Are you going to say no to that? Are you going to say no to the tennis court that needs to be fixed? No, you're not. You want to do the improvements and you want to do them as soon as possible. And to do it in the spring, you just heard, they can vote absentee ballot. So that's going to increase our, our voting numbers. And the information is out there. And then to sit there and blame someone else for not putting this on a November election? Come on. I'm, I'm just going to pull up your big boy girl panties, pull them up, and just be the town council member that you are. Be the person that you are. I'm just saying, be a strong council member. And as what was read to us and what our job is, do your job. And your job is to bring this forward. Let the people decide and bring it forward in March. And I support it wholeheartedly.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that you're always honest. So I do have a question for you. If you're so supportive of this now, when we were approached prior to our local election, why, why didn't you put it on an agenda to put it on for a November referendum?
Nothing was created yet, they had one meeting.
Microphone?
That's not true.
Not sure?
Yeah. I, my question is, why did you not? That, I don't, I don't think that answered it at all. That's, well, then you need to ask Mr. Zimmerman why he said that he did and that you had said that it would be political suicide prior to an election. Now, you had the representation that we have now, it was a six, actually, it was six, two, one, technically at the time. So you had every opportunity to get those tennis courts for the girls tennis team. You had every opportunity to get this project. They've been trying to do this project for the last 50 years. So if you're so enthusiastic about getting this done, and again, talk about courageous. I mean, it, it sounds like it's going to be the second time in a row that I'm voting alongside you all and against the five others. So I don't think it takes courage to vote how you want. I would say you had every, this could have been, the field could have been done already. So I, I don't know. Again, I apologize to Counselor King if that discussion was never had with him or the rest of the council. But what I was told was that you were approached and I was approached, and I was the only one that was for it. And if that's not true, I apologize to you as well. But I like to think that the folks that I spoke with would not tell me that if it wasn't true. So again, you had every opportunity to get it done back then. Probably could have a field by now, but it didn't happen, so.
Counselor Carey?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to call the vet.
Okay, the question has been called. All those in favor of the question being called, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Called, the question has been called. All those in favor of 13B, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Abstentions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Buganski?
No.
Counselor Lewis? Counselor Balboni?
No.
Counselor Carey?
No.
Mayor Delnecky?
No.
Deputy Mayor Syracusea?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Pendleton?
Yes.
Five noes, four yeses.
And motion fails.
Point of clarification, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I could. I just want to make sure, as the resolution reads, blah, 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 as shown in Exhibit A.
Yep.
I appreciate the comment that was made in regards to Section 5 and, and Section 8. Even though we voted it down, I just, just as a point of clarification, maybe it's for the attorney.
That would actually have to go to the bond attorney.
Okay.
Mister, our town attorney, this is done by the bond attorney, and these are, these are the same sections that were in the resolution in January of '24. These are standard sections.
Okay.
But this would have to go back to the bond attorney to see about taking Section 5 and Section 8.
Thank you.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, moving on to, going back to 13, oh, actually, we have to make amended agenda to remove 13C and 13D.
Second. Or motion to?
Motion to remove 13C and 13D.
Second.
All those in favor, all those in favor of the amended agenda of removing 13C and 13D, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, please.
Counselor Buganski?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Counselor Balboni?
Aye.
Say that again?
Yes, thank you. Carey?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Delnecky?
Yeah, yes.
Deputy Mayor Syracusea?
Yes.
Counselor King?
No.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
No.
Counselor Pendleton?
No.
Six yeses, three noes.
Okay. Motion passes. Sorry about that. Let's go back to 13A. Counselor Buganski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving the appropriation of $234,900 of LoSiP funds to cover costs associated with the town hall roof. Whereas the town hall roof was installed in 2004 and is beyond its useful life, and whereas the town council wishes to use $234,900 in LoSiP funds to pay for the replacement of the roof, and whereas the required public hearing was held on Tuesday, January 21, 2025, now therefore be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager to appropriate LoSiP funds to replace the town hall roof.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Counselor Carey? Yeah, sorry. Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only discussion would be, especially based on how you define LoSiP. I'm sure that we may get a question, so I just want to put it out there right now to the town manager. When people might ask, wait a minute, okay, so we're appropriating 230, let's call it 235, $235,000 of LoSiP funds. How much do we actually have of LoSiP funds in general that we're appropriating 235,000?
Sure, so annually, we get a dollar amount allocated to the town from the state of Connecticut. It's somewheres between 200 and 250,000. So this year, we've got the 234,900 that we're asking to use for the roof, which is part of a bigger dollar amount. We're also coupling it with some remaining ARPA funds. I believe it's $381,000 in total for the total project.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Counselor Pendleton.
Mr. Majors?
I believe Mr. Majors is here if he wants to answer any questions, so.
Could you give us the lowdown on the roof, please? How old is it? Why does it need to be replaced? What's the deal?
Sure, I don't know why I'm laughing, I'm sorry. So the roof is 20 years old.
Oh, goodness. Got to put the microphone back on, I think you hit the button. There you go.
Sorry, the roof is 21 years old. It's at the point where it needs to be replaced. It's starting to blister in areas, and what happens when it blisters, it, the roof cracks in areas from heat and cold. The elastomeric components of the roofing materials get hard. It opens up, and then what happens is some water, moisture gets in there, and then that expands when it gets hot outside and creates this blistering thing, which eventually will break. So we're seeing some signs of that now. It's not, there's no leaks in the roof thankfully, but it's at the time now when, you know, now's the time to replace it, so.
And it's a rubber roof, is it? Or tar or something?
It's a tar roof. It's a built up, called built up roof. And we'll be going over that roof, which is fairly common today, believe it or not. We did that at the library, if you remember, about four years ago. That was a rubber roof. We went over that with a liquid applied roof. We do something very similar here. We grind down, sweep off the stones, grind the roof down to pitch it toward the drains and then go over it with a cold liquid applied material that has a 30-year warranty to it.
And how long is it going to take to do?
I believe it told me two months in total.
Two months total?
Yeah.
And it's a 30-year roof, you said?
Yeah, so.
So that's going to get put into the CIP, ClearGov, on the date that it's going to expire?
If it goes out that far, if it goes out that far, sure.
And then, I know it does. It goes out 30 years, I think. And then we can plan on replacing it 30 years from now. So we can start saving money for that one 30 years from now. And this is an under CIP, but it could have been, correct?
It was in CIP, yes.
It was?
Yes.
Okay. And monies are being taken out for it?
No, so we have, as the manager said, we have ARPA funds and LoSiP funds.
Got it.
So we don't need to use that CIP money for that, so we'll use that for something else.
So 30 years down the road, we have to make sure that that's in CIP to get covered again. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Seeing no further questions, I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to 13E. Counselor Fitzgerald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving refund batch number 12 for 24 refunds totaling $26,085.3. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves 24 refunds, the total of said refunds being $26,085.3 and is more fully described in Exhibit A.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion on the refunds? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to 13F. Counselor Buganski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution setting a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on revisions to the town charter. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby sets Monday, February 3, 2025, at 8:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, 1540 Sullivan Ave., South Windsor, Connecticut, as a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the revisions to the town charter.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to 14.
If I may make one, I just noticed, just a point of clarification on the previous resolution, 13E, as more fully described, it should say Exhibit B. Just a correction.
Which one's that? 13 what?
13, 13E, the one that Counsel Fitzgerald just read?
Oh.
Where it says as more fully described, it should say Exhibit B.
Oh, Exhibit B, yes.
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to 13F. Nope, 13F, we did that. Okay, passage of ordinance having none, that's item 14. Moving on to item 15, public input for any matter. Public input for any other matter which, over which the council has jurisdiction shall not exceed 30 minutes. One recogni- When recognized by the mayor, the speaker shall approach the lectern to give their name and address. Speakers shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging an improper motive to any person. The speakers may address the council for any item over which the council has jurisdiction. The speakers shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. And Mister Doug Guigino?
There you go.
Good evening, I'm Doug Guigino, I live at 55 Chapel Road, and I appreciate all your efforts regarding all the things that you have purviewed over. You do have, I came here la- two weeks ago to talk about the project to reconstruct Chapel Road from Route 5 down to Old Main Street. You do have jurisdiction, Mister Stetson did reach out to me. So it looks like this project will not happen this summer, so it seems like it's going to be a 2026 or 2027 project, but revised options are being considered, it has to go to the planning and zoning, and then it comes to you for approval. Still, this is the time to work on it. One of the biggest concerns that I have is the, the non-binding authority of making it a bike path. That is, for my contention, those are for through bikers, people who don't live in South Windsor. There's many ways for people in South Windsor can cross Route 5 and get down to Old Main Street. So I'm not sure where that's fitting into Mister Stetson's decision-making. He's, he's the director of Public Works, the engineering department is doing something, the planning and zoning staff is doing something, so you have these big issues, and then here's a smaller issue, but this, neighbors or people that I know that work, kind of work on Old Main Street, they have said, they consider this section of Chapel Road to be more like Newberry. So I don't know if anybody's ever driven down Newberry, but that is a nice rural, down the hill road, and they consider this section of Chapel to be more like that than it is by the mall, by whatever this project is. So we've got South Windsor over here, Buckland Street, and we've got South Windsor over there, Old Main Street. We have, he referred out to the complete street policy. I'm not sure how that fits. The, you could apply the complete street policy to Demming Street by, I'm not sure what the other road is, but doesn't, Demming Street doesn't go all the way to Ellington, but that's the same footprint of road that this section of Chapel has. Why don't you put a big 36-foot wide with an eight-foot bike path there? There's hardly any homes near that. So I agree that there's this complete street policy in the early 2000s, 90, maybe even 90s, there was an, there was a committee, I'm not sure that's binding, the state of Connecticut, I'm not sure that's binding, you've got this, but, so this section, so I'm going to attend the Town Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday next week. Hopefully, they have such a thing where you can discuss things that are of their jurisdiction without it being on the agenda, so I'll be, I'll be talking with them also. Also, I'd like to invite, I guess it's the Public Works, I guess it's not engineering, I guess it's not planning staff, to come down and see this section of road. You can have maybe a different bike path up the hill to Route 5, and then keep your small footprint as that, as Chapel Road goes into Old Main Street. So I'm going to just, I'm just bringing it up to your attention that maybe next year, you'll have a project in front of you, but when it comes to you, it's going to be complete. You're not going to really have a chance to say, well, what went into it? So if there's any chance to talk to Town Planning and Zoning Commission's members or even Mister Stetson, I'm not sure he was planning on coming back to us and showing us any revisions, but you won't see me in two weeks, I'll be, I'll be talking, I'll be there at the Town Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday. Thank you.
Mister Maniscalco? If this doesn't happen until next year, they're going to have public hearings with the neighbors, like Planning and Zoning obviously will have on Mister Stetson, they've done in the past, if there's major construction on a road, they have a neighborhood-type meeting, don't they?
Sure, there'll be plenty of public meetings and public input opportunities.
Especially if you're changing a road's.
Correct.
Look, okay, great.
Correct.
Thank you.
May I ask a question of the town manager?
Counselor Pendleton?
Thank you. Is there a reason that Pleasant Valley Road wasn't considered as a bike path over Route 5 down to Main Street?
I don't know for, I, I don't have a for sure answer, off the cuff, my thought is it's probably not wide enough for the majority of it.
Oh, it's wider. Pleasant Valley down to Main Street is wider, that's one, and two, that brings you farther up Main Street for the beautiful historic drive down Main Street or up Main Street. I mean, you're seeing more in Main Street if you end up at Pleasant Valley and Main Street. I used to live there, right at the corner, so.
Like I said, I can't answer it for sure, but.
But it would be wiser because it's a wider road. Yeah, just something to look into. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, moving on to, any other, oh, yes, Ms. Doherty.
Thanks, Kathy Doherty, 60 Madison Avenue. You know, tonight, you started discussing a little bit about the budgets and how it's coming. So we have an overall town budget that's $130, $140 million, and of course, the driver of that budget is the Board of Education budget hovering around 90-something million dollars. And the largest driver of that budget is, of course, the teachers' contracts. Now, let me just say that I don't think teachers get paid enough for having to deal with everything, but nonetheless, um, do you want me to wait until you come back?
No, you have it, that's fine.
Because you don't really care, so, okay. So the largest part of the, of the Board of Education budget is, of course, teachers, because it is very intensive, labor-intensive, you know, to make sure that we have people in front of the children. So over this past year, the Board of Education negotiated a brand-new teacher's contract. I personally have not had a chance to look at it, but I'm sure they did their job, I'm sure they did, but there are three parts to a Board of Ed-, to a teacher's contract, and it's specific because while the legislative body has no control over spending on a Board of Education side, what you do have control over is this one contract, because it has such an incredible impact on, on taxes. So, the process is, they negotiate it, once it's ratified with the union and the board, it's sent over to the town clerk's office, once the town clerk's office receives it, then, or it's filed with the town clerk, the local legislative body can reject this contract within 30 days of filing. If it's rejected, then parties go to a mandatory binding arbitration. I want to reiterate, I do not know what's in this contract, I don't know if it's good or bad, you go on the Board of Education, a Board of Education website, and all of a sudden, it's there. This was sent to us in December, not one of you had a chance to look at it, not one of you was given a copy of it, you have no idea what's in that budget, and guess what? It's too late. It is an issue that I'm having, that there continues to be a gross separation between Board of Education and the town. And what it's doing, it's preventing the town from doing its job, it's preventing the board from doing its job, and you feel like a child of divorced parents stuck in the middle that are being pulled from end to end. You guys need to figure out how to work together, because I am shocked to find out tonight. And again, this has nothing to do with what's in that contract, it could be an incredible contract, they could have givebacks, I don't know. But I do know, when I sat on that Board of Education for pretty near 20 years, we never had a contract that went by without having the mayor, the deputy mayor, the Board of Ed chair, and the vice chair get together to know and pinpoint what was in it. Never happened, never happened. And now, it's like almost, I feel like, as a citizen, things are being done secretively. None of you were aware of it, I don't know, I want to blame somebody right now, but I'm not sure where that falls. It was filed with the town clerk's office, at that point, whose responsibility is it to get it to the legislative body? Because clearly, and I would not expect that you would know, that this negotiation is going on unless you knew that these are the contracts that are coming up for renewal, and knew to keep an eye on, but even the negotiations are not done in public, so you wouldn't know about it. So, there's got to be a fix here, I'd love to offer a solution, don't have one, it just is an issue that really needs to be looked at and reviewed. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for item 15, for any item, any input on any matter? Seeing none, moving on to item 16, communications from the council, and I think I'll take first bite. Counselor Fitzgerald, you're the liaison to the Board of Education.
Yes, I am.
Did this ever come up to discussion on the board's contract?
Yes, I was the, I was an observer for, for all of the sessions that the board had with the union negotiators.
And this was approved in, as Ms. Doherty said, December?
It was, yeah, sometime last year.
Okay, so, for me, that would have been something to bring to the council's attention, I would think.
I, I, I mean, I don't know what the rules are, how it goes, I was just there as an observer, and I wasn't given any, you know, direction about what I was supposed to, you know, if I was supposed to bring that, like, before the council, or if I, you know, if there was something that I was supposed to do with that information, and whenever.
Probably under item nine, communications from the council, the boards and commissions saying that they approved a contract on such and such a date.
And, and I, and I, I wasn't there for the final negotiations, because I think that was when I was, like, in the hospital or had just gotten out of the hospital, so I wasn't there for, like, the final rounds of that.
Okay, I'm going to reach back to the chair of the Board of Education on that one. Thank you.
Yep.
Deputy Mayor Syracusea?
Uh, thank you, I think in Counselor Fitzgerald's defense, maybe, I, when I was appointed, I had similar kind of situations where I wasn't sure about certain things. I would recommend always picking up the phone or emailing the town manager, he was always very willing to meet with me or speak with me over the phone, because like you, I, I didn't want to, like, cross any lines or, or what have you, so in the future, I would just, if you ever have any sort of question as to, like, should I share this or can I, Mister Maniscalco does a great job with that, or of course, you can obviously reach out to the mayor, and she would probably do the same, so, but I just want to point out, I guess, courage and being a town counselor looks like getting up during public input when a resident is speaking and walking out, and calling people the peanut gallery, so, yeah, I just want to point that out, that I, I feel there was a lot of disrespect tonight in this meeting, there's an empty chair right now, the moment, a resident, whether you agree with them or not, it's our job to sit here and listen, we have every opportunity during discussion items, what have you, to go to the bathroom, if you get an emergency call or something from your spouse or kid or whatever, and, and the personal attacks, I, I have nothing but respect for the two of you, and quite frankly, Counselor Pendleton as well, as many of you have hopefully seen. But I, I don't think we should ever be speaking to each other that way, demeaning each other's lives, our character, I happen to know very personal things about everybody to my left, the things that they go through, the people they welcome in their homes, the losses that they've shared, that's courage, you know, we all go through life, we all go through challenges, and we're all volunteers, I mean, none of us get any financial gain or any sort of gain beyond pride for our town and serving our town, so I wish she was here, I can see her out there, this message is not for the two of you, I just hope, moving forward, that we can avoid attacking each other, because I don't believe any of you deserve that, and I certainly know that the folks to my left and the folks that come and sit in these chairs, or email us, or call us, deserve that kind of treatment either. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to shout out to a resident, I really try not to pay attention to the news unless it comes from some reliable sources, and right now, it seems like the only reliable source is our Bobcat Prowl. You know, they, they go out into our community, they interview adults, students, anybody that they can, along with handling their grades, their personal activities right now for the high school students that are going through their midterms, shout out to all of you guys who should be studying right now, got a half-day tomorrow anyway. But shout out to, well, I'll just, just read this real quickly, "South Windsor Student Places Second in Patriotic Essay Contest." Voices of Democracy Audio Essay Contest has been the scholarship program since 1961. They announced the top winners, created in 1947, Audio Essay Contest has been the premier scholarship program since 1961, open to high school students, grades nine through 12, enrolled in a public, private, or parochial school home study program. 25,000 students across the country participate to compete for more than $1 million in scholarships and incentives. They record a three-to-five-minute essay based on a patriotic theme, then they move on to district level, blah de blah. The year's theme is "America Today, Our Forefather's Vision." The theme was, is America Today, Our Forefather's Vision, and Shoam Shah, who is a senior at the South Windsor High School, he took second place. He was sponsored by the VFW Post 2046 of Manchester, they got their certificates January 11th during the breast, the breakfast, but just shout out to Shoam Shah, appreciate you representing South Windsor in this way and collecting that money, hold on to it for whatever taxes you might have to pay for later in life. Just joking, but congratulations to, shout out to, again, the Bobcat Prowl for making us aware of these things. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor King. Counselor Carey?
I'd just like to suggest that maybe we need to look at documenting some policies and procedures, you know, that this budget thing is a concern, and also, we probably need to revisit our town strategy, you know, because what seems to happen is, you know, there was a strategy committee before, you know, any of us, I, I think Counselor King, you might have been here, Counsel Pendleton, but, and they put a strategy together, it's not a long-term strategy, it was a short-term strategy. I think we need a strategy, people have brought that to our attention, people keep bringing things up about what we're doing, we seem to be missing, and I know, I'm from corporate America, and, okay, I apologize, but I don't care, municipalities need processes, policies, and procedures too, and we need a strategy. And so I'd like to, us to try and do something about that, and I'd be more than happy to work with, you know, Mister Maniscalco, on, let's see what we can do to get that together with the Board of Ed, and, you know, kind of, it's nice that the citizens and residents are coming and telling us some of the things we're missing, and I appreciate it, thank you very much, and I think we want to do something with it.
Counsel Lewis? You had your light on? No longer?
Can I?
Mister Maniscalco?
Yeah, can I just follow up real quickly? I know that we had some brief conversation related to the teacher's contract, myself and the town attorney have been looking at some state statutes and talking, so the state statute does require that the Board of Ed provide that contract when it's done to the town clerk, it's then the responsibility of the town clerk to then provide public notice, including to all of you, that that has been received, which then gives you the opportunity to have. 30 days to potentially do nothing or vote it down. Um, in the event it gets voted down, then it goes to binding arbitration. I have sent a text message and a couple emails and I have no idea where the contract is. So I have no idea if it was received by the town clerk or if it's still at the Board of Ed or if it's maybe still waiting for signatures. I, I, this is the first time I had heard about the contract overall, so. Um, that's kind of where we are and I will keep you up to date. As soon as we do get it, we'll get it on your next agenda and it'll be something for you to look at, but, um, I, we, we did confer briefly, and this is very preliminary, but there's the potential that if public notice wasn't provided, that you did not receive it, um, that contract could be null and void as well. So we need to figure that out, but.
Okay.
Right?
That's good to know. Thank you very much. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, for, for the record, and thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Seracusa, for your comments. There's no doubt that we are inexperienced and new at this. It was my hope that with the experience that's currently on the town council, that we could have been a super-town council because we have an ex-mayor, an ex-deputy mayor. Uh, I, I thought we had experience and we, we transferred stuff. I, I'm one who believes a lot more in collaboration than competition, um, and, and it hasn't been that way at all. What we've done, the five of us, if we're the inexperienced ones, is we've slowed the ship down that was already running too fast into spending too much money, and we're trying to slow it down enough to make a turn and adjust things. These things take time. We've never done a budget before. Last year was very overwhelming and I'm not here to make excuses. It's our responsibility to know these. I've reached out to other counselors to try and ask questions. Oftentimes, I get things, can't talk now, call you later, to no call back, whatever. I've met with everyone. Um, I'm one who'd like to learn better the processes and procedures and how to do things, but it takes a team. But what happens with transparency i- is it doesn't take shots at people. It doesn't demean or diminish people. We're gonna have disagreements, we can respect each other. I just wanted to say for the record, um, we all know what experience we lack and we're doing what we can to do what we're asked to do by our voters, and the reason why the November is because that puts it in front of the best chance to get the most people to participate. I've gone around town and I've talked to people, I've been to doctor's appointments, I've been to CVS, I've been to Stop &amp; Shop, and say, hey, have you heard about what's going on in town? And nobody's, no, they have no idea. The people who know what's going on in town are, are maybe 3% of people in the population who are involved in the town. Or, or, or the, if you fill this room with all the athletics people who are in favor of this, a- and it was standing room only a- and there's, and we gotta call a fire marshal because so many people, that's still 0.01% of the population and we can't make a decision based on that. We need to get the participation of the whole town and that's what we're here for, that's what democracy is, and that's our inexperience speaking. So if that's what you want, we're slowing the ship down, we spent less money before last year than with the year before that, and yeah, things are going up. But I think, I have hope and opportunity for the future that the great increase of things, which mostly been inflated the last five, six years, is gonna start to decrease and maybe prices will go down. We don't know the future, but we can face it honestly and straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. Counselor Fitzgerald, just like to address you. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, it's just that being the lia, and I just wanted to make that clear, that being the liaison, and I, I know you did miss a meeting being in the hospital, so I just wanted to make that clear, that I wasn't trying to, you know, just want to right the ship.
No problem at all, and, and actually, just to clarify, the last communication that I had on this was on October 29th, and, um, I had missed, like, the previous negotiation meeting, and so I had just gotten a general thing saying that they had had a productive session with the teachers and they were able to settle the contract. So that was the last that I had heard. I never heard anything about it being signed or not signed or anything like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything further for item?
Second.
Um, I haven't gotten through the agenda yet.
Oh, sorry.
Seeing none for item 16, moving on to item 17, executive session having none, moving on to item 18, adjournment. We have a motion?
Motion closed. Second.
All those in, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.